Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call and order this regular business meeting of the Stevensville City Council here at 5:30 on Tuesday, December 5th. And welcome, everybody, tonight. We've got a full crowd tonight, and that's exciting because we've got a lot of things to celebrate here at the beginning of the council meeting. And as is our tradition, before we begin tonight, will please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance to the United States flag and then the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
I'd like to welcome Kirk Plaxico, the pastor at the Church of the Nazarene, who's going to offer tonight's invocation.
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. It's a beautiful day, even though it's not great outside, but we live in Stevensville, Texas, so we're blessed. And let's pray together. Isaiah forty-two eight says, "I am the Lord; that is my name; I will not yield my glory to another or praise to idols." Lord Jesus, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for your many blessings. Lord, I just want to take this time to thank you for all that you've done for us and giving us a great place to live. Lord, help us never to forget that what makes Stevensville special is you living and breathing in its citizens. Without you, Stevensville is just like any other place. Thank you for blessing us. May we do whatever you ask us to do. Bless these servant leaders on this council. May they do whatever is your desire and nothing else. God, you be the Lord over the meeting tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much for that. We've got a couple of recognitions this evening, like I said. To begin with, the North Central Texas Council of Governments has an award that we're fortunate to have some great professionals within the Stevensville Police Department. And Chief King will please come forward and let us know about this prestigious and well-warranted award.
Absolutely. Mayor, council, we get an opportunity tonight to do something that we certainly enjoy doing, and that's recognize some of our outstanding employees from the police department. So I guess I would ask Ms. Kristi Metzger, Ms. Lori Lesnut, and Ms. Nicole McKenzie to come right up here for us. We're also recognizing Dina Poston, but she was unable to be with us this evening. And so recently, the North Central Texas Council of Governments recognized these employees and were joining into that. Ms. Metzger was awarded the 911 Supervisor of the Year for the North Central Texas Council of Governments, and that covers fourteen counties, if I remember correctly. And so you can imagine all of the different law enforcement agencies and people within those counties. She has served the citizens of Stevensville since June of two thousand and eight and became our dispatch supervisor in July of two thousand and fifteen. She is the first civilian supervisor that the department has had, and according to her fellow telecommunications officers, has defined her new position with grace and professionalism and is very supporting and encouraging in her duties. So thank you, Kristi.
Okay, Kristi, come right here and let me give you this. Fourteen counties, did you hear that? Of the year. Let's give her a hand.
Ms. Lori Lesnut received the North Central Texas Council of Governments 911 Professional Award. Lori has served the citizens of Stevensville since February of two thousand. Ms. Lesnut was nominated by her peers because of her willingness to be a team player, the pride she takes in her job, and the outstanding job she does to enhance the public safety and ensure officer safety here in the community. Thank you.
Let's give Lori a hand.
And then telecommunications officers Dina Poston and Nicole McKenzie were nominated as the North Central Texas Council of Governments Team of the Year. Ms. Poston has served the citizens of Stevensville since May of two thousand and fourteen, and Ms. McKenzie has served the citizens of Stevensville since September of two thousand and fourteen. During a major incident, Ms. Poston remained on the phone with a 911 caller to offer comfort and support until help arrived at the scene, while Ms. McKenzie handled all incoming phone calls and radio traffic from emergency responders in order to allow Ms. Poston to be able to remain on the line with a 911 caller. Teamwork such as this is essential to our mission and the safety of the community and telecommunications profession. So thank you to the colleagues.
Listen, it takes a special person, special professional, to do what they do day in and day out. What I would call the tip of the spear, when an incident happens, these are the women that hear that first. Before the first responders even, they're hearing that. But what a blessing it is to have such great professionals in our community. Thank you all so very, very much. Let's go. All right. Like I said, we've got a lot to celebrate tonight, and hopefully this is a precursor of some things to come, but it's a continuation of a great tradition in Stevensville, Texas, and that is that we know how to play some football, right? And the city is champions for any reason, and the ability to play football in this town just kind of goes hand in hand. You hear about the word Stevensville, you go across the state of Texas, and that's what they talk about. So we have with us tonight a new generation of champions. The eight-and-under Texans from Stevensville, Texas are the twenty-seventeen City League Tournament Champions, and that's for the Texas Athletic Athletics Federation that was held in Burnett. And we've got the team here tonight, and we want to congratulate them for being champions. So if we can get the team to come up here, we've got Aiden, Austin, Boston, Brian, Dane, Hudson, and Hudson. Loffler, Raiden, Rush, Court, Jase, and head coaches Kenny Haley and Chris Briesman. Coaches, y'all get up here. Is Will here too? Where's Will? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I was looking right over you. So, how you doing? This guy knows a little bit about coaching, but coaches don't mean anything as a player, correct? So let's give this team a great round of applause. So who is the center? All right. Dane Braden, okay. Y'all made it happen. Way to go. It's usually the quarterback that gets all the credit, but the quarterback gets nothing. We've got the center, right? All right, the team effort, way to go, guys. Congratulations. And we've got some goodies for you over here if you want to pass out to yourselves. Coaches, y'all want to say anything? Coach?
I didn't understand about this. You may have just worn it, but one thing I would say is we've coached several teams together, but this is one of the first teams that all the parents have had our kids there at every practice, and we always ask them to get there fifteen to thirty minutes before the games, and they were always out there. So a lot of it has to do with our parents as well. So we have great parents besides the great kids. So that's all I've got.
So y'all keep doing that, and you'll beat Argyle, too. All right. Pretty big trophy.
Thank you. Good job, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Hmm. Is she going to speak to us tonight?
Yeah.
I thought maybe she was going to call her son down.
You never know. Call any of us down.
She's a good lady.
I've got a question in the consent agenda. Is this our capital improvement plan, or is this just kind of state and some capital improvements?
So we still don't have a capital improvement?
All right, that was exciting. We'll move now to Citizens General Discussion. This is time where any citizen can come forward and address the council as an individual or a group. I've got one input tonight. See if I can get this name right. Patricia Weldon. Just come forward and state your name and address, and she's here to speak tonight on the E-Rath Historical Map.
Hi, thank y'all so much. So delighted to be here, and thank y'all for allowing me to come and say thank you to get the opportunity to do this. Stevensville Study Club was formed back in the forties. Let me tell you about these ladies. Back in the fifties, some of them got together and said, "We need to start a museum in Stevensville, Texas." So, you know, they couldn't go borrow money in Stevensville, Texas back in the fifties. We ladies couldn't do much, anything. And so, if I walk away, y'all can still hear me. So they went to the bank, took their husband to the bank, and said, "We are going to borrow money, and we're going to buy where, down at the museum." They went to Austin, they got the document to open a museum in Stevensville, Texas. That's the reason we have a museum. Dr. Baker, a couple of years ago in two thousand and fifteen, took his class, Dr. Baker at Charleston State University, took his class and had them go around Stevensville, Texas and document all the buildings. They documented them, they dated them, they did everything. And so we had that. I found out about it. I'm president of Stevensville Study Club right now. We have a project. Every time we become president, we have to have a project. Well, my project was, I went to Louisiana one day, and I saw this, and they had a map there, and I said, "We're going to do that." It's a Stevensville Historical Map. I've given each one of y'all one, and y'all are welcome to some if you want some. But Dr. Baker, the historical, the E-Rath County Historical Association, they got with us and helped us choose twenty-five places for us to put on this map. So we got that, we got all the information. Addison Winslow, who works here at Stevensville, the city of Stevensville, he was my wonderful map person and put up and got all our information put together.
Addison was around back there.
Yeah. He did so much, he put up with us. I mean, my ladies on my committee were Kathy Irk, Cherie West, and Kelly John Nance. And the three of us, the four of us ladies did all of this and got all the information. And then we went to the city council, I mean, the city council, Chamber of Commerce, and I went to Jeremy first, and I went to July and said, "We want to do this, will you help us?" And they did. So we've been working on this, we've got this all done. This is all provided by Stevensville Study Club. We have these, we're going to put them around at different places for people to use as a place, to see the history of Stevensville and E-Rath County and Dublin, and we hope y'all celebrate this with us. We are so delighted to provide this with our, to our city. And thank you so much for letting me come and say thank you and giving it to you. And enjoy it, and go visit it. We did a day trip one day, and we just loaded up in the car, and we did, we did E-Rath County, and we went to every place and went and looked, we were just like a tourist. And we've got it so you can go on and www it on your phone and pull up and find all the information. We not only have them listed, but we have all the information about it that we got from Dr. Baker's class. Thank y'all so very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I just need to make one small correction. You can pull it up on your phone unless, like your mother or Ellen Nick still have a flip phone.
We're not a people, Mark.
Yes, ma'am. Technology is not my friend. I'll not speak for anybody else, but it is not my friend.
Stacy, are you listening?
All right, anyone else wishing to speak before the council? All right, tonight then, we'll move on to the tax collection report. We've got Mr. Jeff Brown here tonight from Leinberger, Goben Blair, and Sampson to present our annual tax collection report, and Jennifer here also. Thank you for being here.
Mayor, council, thanks, Mayor, for putting me after the kids and your mother. I'm going to be much more boring than anything else you've heard. I do want to say thank you for, I've represented the city for a long, long time, and appreciate the opportunity to come before you, and appreciate the opportunity to work with city staff. And I've known Mr. Thomas for longer than either one of us want to admit. We've worked together to, on city issues, and I've worked with your elected tax assessor for a long time as well. And I just want you all to know, y'all have one of the best tax collectors in the state, and I don't even want her to hear that, for fear that she might get the big hit, but I know she won't. Jennifer really is, she is a great tax collector. She knows her business, she knows, she knows how to get money for her jurisdictions, not just for the city, but for all the jurisdictions. And I just want to say that publicly because I harass her sometimes, and she doesn't know how to take me sometimes, but I do greatly respect her and the job she does. Let me get to my report. I give this report to you, very similar report to you every year, kind of telling you what we do. You know, we start working for y'all in July, and we send out letters, as I told you before, the first letter we send out is very, very soft, very generic, basically says, "Hey, you owe the city of Stevensville some money, get along down the tax office, get it paid." Obviously, those letters get more severe as the year goes along. This past year, we sent out nine hundred and fifty-three letters on your behalf. We, when those letters don't work, and when people don't come in and try to get things worked out, we have to file lawsuits, and we filed twenty-five of those. One of the things that Ms. Carrie and her staff do such a good job with is working with your taxpayers, giving them an opportunity to come in and make, you know, sometimes somebody doesn't have five hundred or seven hundred dollars to come in and pay their city taxes. The staff of the tax office will work, people give them four, five, six months to come in and pay those in smaller amounts, and then y'all are getting the money, and I don't have to file a lawsuit, and they don't have to pay court costs, and all those kind of things. But it's extra work on the tax collector staff to do that, and they do a really good job of doing that for y'all. When we, after we file those twenty-five lawsuits, we get to dismiss some of them. This year, we got to dismiss thirteen of them, which is good. Some more of those will be dismissed over the coming year as we, as we either do tax sales or take judgments and those kind of things. We only had to take two judgments on behalf of the city this year, which is a good thing. That means that most of the things are getting resolved without us having to go to court. I always like to take this time to tell you that your county-elected officials are help, they are a great help to me and my law firm trying to represent you in district court. Judge Cashin has never refused to help us anything he could help us with, whether it be a court setting or a tax war. We literally drive up one morning, go to his office, say, "Judge, we're here, we need you to sign this document because we've got to go do something." He always makes the time for us. He's very accommodating for us when we're working on your behalf. We actually had to sell four properties last year, which is, which is not very many in a town the side of Stevensville, but that's a good thing. And the only thing I really care about is the paragraph under total collections where it says that we have to collect almost fifty-eight thousand dollars for the city. We, that is a great amount for the city, not because it's a lot of dollars, but because it's so small. Y'all's taxpayers here in this community pay as good as any city I've worked with. I represent personally about twenty-five cities, and y'all have the best tax collector on your current taxes. I get to do less work for y'all than I do for any other city I represent. That's another way to say it. But that's a good thing, that's not a bad thing. That means your citizens are paying, and y'all are getting your budgetary money up Again, I've enjoyed working here. I realize this is public record, this is going to go, if somebody could pull this up and say it. This is actually, I've been representing the city now for thirty years, which is an awfully big number. I still think I'm twenty-five, but it's really untrue. Anyway, it's an honor to represent, represent the city now. We just want to thank you for it. Anybody got any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Brown? All right, well, for thirty years, still keeping you, you must be doing something right.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the detail and the good news, and Jennifer, also your work. So the number was small to begin with, but then for us to be able to pull that together, appreciate the work.
He's not always happy with me because I don't turn over much to him.
Yeah.
Don't give me much to work with, I said, but it's a good thing for us.
Right, exactly. All right, well, thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McClennan, second by Ms. Zachary, to accept the tax collection report for September first, two thousand and sixteen, to August thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Any discussion? Do not proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I want to get a map before I go.
Okay.
I think I see my future. By the way, I'm the history maker, so this is right up my alley.
All right. Thanks, Jeffrey.
We often have people coming in and looking for information, so I'd like to have this available.
All right.
Great.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a hotel occupancy tax revenue fund proposal. It's a proposal that I've submitted for the agenda. Before I talk about this, I want to say that the council has been working diligently to ensure that taxpayers' dollars are spent wisely and that there is oversight of that as you expect from us as a council. Also want to say that I love my wife very much, and if we were to ask two people that had never met us before how our relationship was, and say, "Well, those are two completely different people," and I think that's God's plan to bring two completely different people together to make them whole. And I think the council, our council, your council, has those characteristics where different perspectives on a common problem can provide a better solution for the citizens than it might otherwise. And I think that's what you expect from us, and I think that's what we are charged to do. I think different perspectives can create a situation where there's a perceived disagreement when in actuality there's violent agreement. And I think the task at hand for us as a council is to work through that, which we continually do, to bring ideas and proposals together for the citizens of this community. And the proposal that I put together basically looks at the hotel occupancy tax issue from half of the problem because we have, as a council, already discussed and agreed on the other half. One half being how the finances and the location of the hotel occupancy tax would be considered. The second is, and this is what I wanted to focus in on, how are the policies and procedures of the community implemented to ensure that we comply with state law? This is something that we have not spent enough time on to be able to define the problem adequately, and there's been discussion that's gone on now for, I think, as we would all agree, probably too long. But the task at hand is very important, and that's for us to provide proper oversight of the revenues. Two weeks ago, we had a presentation from a gentleman that's a general counsel for the Hotel and Lodging Association for the state of Texas. And during that presentation, he basically enlightened the council on the fact that there's a two-step policy in the state of Texas that says all hotel occupancy tax dollars have to ensure that they directly promote tourism and that they directly promote the convention and hotel industry. And when I heard that, a light went off in my head that we, as a city, do not have policies in place to ensure that that is the case. And so this proposal that's in our packet tonight is, it's only a recommendation because we, as a council, need to get together and talk about, how do we ensure that we have a proper ordinance? How do we ensure we have a proper policy? And how do we have a procedure to ensure that we properly manage the expenditures of hotel occupancy tax revenues in a manner that ensures compliance with state law? And I've introduced some ideas here only to generate discussion, and I wasn't asking for that discussion tonight, but for us to meet, we've got a work session that is planned, and then we've asked Alan Barnes to bring to us the other half of this discussion, which is, how do you resource it? How do you put personnel against it, and where do you locate it? And I think this proposal brings both sides together to look at, not only how do you resource it, but how do you provide proper governance with a policy in place that ensures that we comply with state law? And so I would ask the council to, you know, consider this as we look to bring this to closure for our community. And I also want to say that, and I think this is important for our community to hear, Carla and I had a discussion earlier this evening, and I would say that, and Carla, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but we're in agreement that we are moving in the right direction and that we want to work together as a council in the best interest of this community. And we are, we're excited about the future, and I think the thing that stands out to me is that this is a council that wants to accept the responsibilities that it has at hand, and we want to hold ourselves accountable to that, and we want to do it in the best interest of the community. And so I see this proposal that I've put together really as a supporting document for the resolution that we're about to consider in that we need to have a plan in place to ensure that we properly not only resource a visitors bureau, but we also have proper policies and procedures in place for that bureau. And with that, I'll just stop and see if there's any questions or comments, really not looking for a decision at all on this, other than agreement that we take this, these ideas forward to a work session that we can meet resolution, and hopefully by January have something in place and on the path to success.
Well, I guess I would just ask, and I don't know, Jeremy, you may not answer the question. I know that Mr. Barnes has been working in similar vein. Is the intention to try to marry those two together somehow?
Yeah, Mark, I think that's a great way of putting it, marrying it together, and that's why I wanted to start out with this analogy of marriage, is that we've asked Alan to look at, how do you, what's the budget? How do you resource it? What's the position description? What's the personnel piece of this look like? That's what I would call the components of making this work, but without a policy and a procedure to guide it in the future, we would tend to end up right back where we started from, and that is... Yeah, Mark, I, I think that's a great way of putting it, marrying it together. And that's why I wanted to start out with this analogy of marriage is that we've asked Alan to look at, how do you, what's the budget? How do you resource it? What's the person, uh, position description? What's the personnel piece of this look like? That's what I would call the, the, um, the components of making this work, but without a policy and a procedure to guide it in the future, we, we would tend to end up right back where we started from. And that is, we were, we were operating for the community of hotel occupancy tax revenue that was not technically in compliance with statute and that we couldn't validate or verify that dollars are being spent, uh, that generate, as it says, the two steps direct, uh, they promote tourism or directly promote convention and hotel industry. So we didn't have a policy in place to validate that. And if you look at other communities, they've got, um, your grant processes, they've got tourism boards. Many of the things that, that Sherry and Carla have been bringing up, those are, those are the policy piece of the resourcing piece that we need to bring together. And so what I'm suggesting is that we've given, given Alan the task from the resourcing end, but we, we need to bring the policy piece of this together so they're looked at holistically.
Okay, well, that goes back to the, the timing question. Will, will Alan have something prepared in time for this? You said there was already a work session set up, or are you saying that we need to just establish?
I'm proposing that we, we schedule that so that we can get something in place for the, so that we have the information available for us to, when we meet in January to be able to, to get this going.
So you think, you think Alan's there?
No, Alan's been working on it and, and staff has been working on it. I think we have a lot of pieces. I don't, I haven't heard much about actually having a workshop between now and January. I know that he, his goal was to have something by January, but I'm sure we can speed that process up if we're, we're asked to.
And I, I think there's, um, there's plenty of material out there for us to at least have a, a draft or straw man to look at. Um, I mean, si, many cities that I know many of us have already looked at, like Bastrop and McKinney and Argyle and, not Argyle, we already beat them, so. Uh, but, but we, we can draw from.
I don't think that'll be a problem. I think we can bring something to, to workshop.
Well, even Cleburne. I mean, Jeremy, you might share with us that, I mean, there's many things that you, you've seen in Cleburne already that, that could be put in place fairly, fairly easily.
Yeah, and there's, I mean, there's a number of models and I think we're, I think we've already worked on some of that. We already have a couple of packets together that we're prepared to put together. So, I mean, we're, we're on our way with that and I, we'll wait until Barnes gets back, Mr. Barnes gets back so he can put his stamp of approval on any of that stuff as well, so.
Okay. Good night. All right. He's going to come back speaking German, I guess. For those of you who don't know, uh, Mr. Barnes is on, uh, leaves visiting family in Germany. They're stationed at Ramstein Air Base, so that's why he's not with us tonight. So, any, any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to add something, if you don't mind. Uh, a lot of this, I, I agree, there's some, some policy issues and so forth. But without getting into too much discussion, I feel that it is imperative that we, we have the opportunity to join the Texas Hotel Lodging Association. And as we do that, then Brian Sullivan, y'all remember the attorney that we visit with, extreme to be, uh, seem to be extremely knowledgeable. I feel like this gentleman, uh, can help us considerably with policies and procedures and that type of thing because he has seen that before. And also believe understood he to say that the legal services would be free if we, if we, if we join them.
Right.
So, um, you know, that's probably what I'd like to add to the process.
Okay. Jeremy, you got that?
Yeah, and we've reached out to them a little bit already, asking them a couple of questions and they've been super responsive to us and I think they've even given us a couple of sample ordinances, so I think it'd be a good idea.
See, that's what I'm thinking. And, and also, uh, you know, the second part of that is they have some, what I would consider some, some fairly, uh, high-powered, uh, marketing that goes along with it, uh, that's cyber-based and what have you. So that, uh, that seems like a, a good place to, to start.
You want, you want us to bring that back to you in the workshop as the proposal or go ahead and?
I, I, I think just reach, reach out to him to, um, find out what it takes to be a part of the association and how much they're willing to help us uh, in the next thirty days bring this together.
Okay.
All right, then we'll move, uh, on to, uh, the, the next item which is related to that and that is a, a resolution to, to create a tourism and visitors bureau. Uh, this is a result of, of several work sessions that we've had, uh, talking about this, realizing that this, this is a journey for our community and that we, we really have not had, um, things in, in writing, um, that, that detail, um, how this is supposed to, supposed to operate within our, within our community. And so Jeremy, you want to give us a, a, a quick rundown on this?
Yeah, um, back in the workshop, and I don't have the date in front of me, uh, Mr. Barnes was tasked with bringing a resolution that would basically, a, a statement of how these funds should be spent and, and what the, what our intentions are. And so this, this resolution that we have spells out how the money can be used, uh, the revenue from the hotel motel tax can be used and in the categories and basically make sure it meets the, the two criteria. Um, it also allows for the city, if they so choose, in the future, um, to contract this service out. Um, so it kind of lines, lines all that out and I'm open to any questions that you have. I, I did find this, this, um, resolution off of another city, so I kind of mirrored what they were doing with it.
You already have joined in that association. I'd like to thank Doug and the finance committee for stepping up and volunteering to take on another job.
Mayor, I have a couple of reservations about this. The.
The resolution?
The resolution, yes, sir. I know several years ago, the city considered outsourcing the operation of our wastewater treatment plant. And I did not at the time think that was a good idea, but it has proven to be an excellent idea because of the size, the experience, the, the, the many things that that particular organization brings to the table. And it has benefited the city greatly that they are in charge of that instead of the city being in charge of it. The visitors bureau may or may not fall into that same category, but to me, it, it could parallel that because the city has not been in that business. I'm not saying that we shouldn't be, but I'm saying that sometimes other people can do things better than the city or city staff can do them for a number of different reasons. Those being the experience, resources and the things that I already mentioned. The, the last sentence on this resolution before we were handed these amendments says that.
Which, those are for me, not the city, by the way.
Okay.
I didn't want you to think that that had come from anybody.
This is yours, okay?
Yes, this is mine.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm still going to say what I started to say.
No, 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 go ahead. I just wanted you to not be mistaken that it had come from anybody else.
I'm uncomfortable with the last statement on that that says we're going to create a tourism and visitors bureau. The implication there is that the city will be in charge of this in perpetuity and be responsible for it financially possibly with staff time or resources or other things. And Mr. Allen and I discussed that this morning, that if, if one of our staff people is going to be in charge of this, then that person won't be able to perform the other duties possibly, which means inadvertently, tax dollars are being expended to support the hotel motel tax operations, the visitors bureau operations. I think we need to have a resolution and I like what the resolution lays out, but the implication of that last sentence to me may or may not accurately reflect what we as a council want to do, or maybe it's just that I'm uncomfortable with that. Should Stevieville have representation in, in the tourism business? Absolutely. And I don't think any of us would question that. I'm just not sure the city's the best equipped to do that. And I've had numerous people question the wisdom of us being in charge of that with some other instances of some other, in some other areas where we may have not been as efficient as we could have been. But the resolution itself is good. It outlines many things that we've talked about. It outlines many things that, that we should have been doing and now we need to be sure we do to be in compliance with law. But that particular phrase at the end of it troubles me.
Well, if, if I can just offer Alan to your comment, I, I think when we met in work session and, and asked for this resolution to be drafted, what we were, what we were looking for is, is something that, that clearly signified that we have a separate entity that's responsible for hotel occupancy tax revenue management. And, and not to dictate where that's done necessarily, but that it, it would exist as a, as an entity, which we don't have today. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremy, but this, this, this policy, I mean, excuse me, this resolution basically says that we are going to create a standalone organization, but it doesn't dictate where that's going to reside. Uh, it, it leaves that for a later decision.
Yes, and Randy and I have talked to this, Mr. Thomas, and yes, it's creating the tourism, but it doesn't say that it has to stay with the city or that it, it is the city. It, we have the door open to contract it out if we still choose. Um, so, yes, you're correct.
Until you add some terms to it, I don't think it, I don't think it obligates the city to answer it. That helps Alan.
Okay.
I, uh, read this and I agree that it doesn't really say much other than we're creating a visitors bureau. Um, I feel like, uh, we kind of all already sort of met and talked about having an employee that we hired that was paid with the hot tax funds and stuff. And I feel like if we don't add a little bit more, we're kind of hobbling Alan in his, uh, in the duty that we have charged him with to stand something up. So in aid of that, I wrote these, um, uh, five amendments, proposed amendments, okay? To this resolution that, um, I'd like to offer, um, up for us possibly adding them tonight. I feel like, uh, uh, that we do need to get some clarity on it. We do need to get it, um, started. We need to authorize Alan to do something. He's, with all due respect, the city employees don't have any particular direction to go yet until we authorize something in place, which I, we have discussed, I think, at the finance committee meeting and at one of the general meetings, uh, hiring a, uh, a, a visitor's, you know, a, a bureau employee. I don't remember what we called that, but I'm sure a title can be found.
I thought it was coordinator.
Coordinator. And that, um, if we, we are, we're going to cause this to be lagging behind, um, uh, the city effectively doing anything at this point. Now, I'm fine if we don't pass any of the amendments. I'm fine if we pass some of them, none of them. But I did want to propose them that I think it's important that, um, uh, that in compliance with the law, um, that we proposed it is staffed by an employee hired and supervised by the city administrator, whose salary and benefits will be paid out of the hot funds in accordance with the law. That the resolution would authorize the city administrator to disperse the hot funds necessary to staff and maintain the tourism and visitors bureau to include but not limited to utilities, website design, equipment and location. Because we're, we are, in January, we are going to start having those calls come in to us and those, those, uh, uh, hits if, to our website and our emails. Um, that I think that, uh, we need to state that this resolution would place the hot fund under the oversight of the finance committee, which would make the recommendations to the council for ex, approval of the fund expenditures in accordance with the law, that as we discussed in the finance committee meeting, that all the expenditures for the tourism visitors bureau will be self-sustaining so that the city will not be charged for anything that will be paid for out of the hot funds. Um, and that this resolution authorizes the ci, city of Stevieville to join the Texas Hotel and Lodging Association to take advantage of their free legal consulting regarding the hot fund, legalities, expenditures, as well as their assistance. One of the big things they mentioned was that they can assist us with getting the law changed so that it, Stevieville has the ability to, uh, have more flexibility with the hot funds and that that has to be a legislative fix and that they, that's what they do. Um, so I think that their assistance with, um, creation of the legislation that's specifically related to Stevieville and they also, as was stated earlier, provide advocacy, legal support, marketing, education, and they have these very vast venues for tourism promotion. So I'm offering those up as amendments to this resolution that we have here. And they would follow directly that last line of creating this visitors bureau.
Mayor, I think these amendments do nothing but support what I said earlier. We're going to involve city administrator time. Are we going to pay part of his salary out of the hot tax? We've got our finance director involved now because he's got to go to the finance committee, which will have to come from staff. And now we're going to have city attorney involved also with legalities and other things dealing with the attorneys from the, uh, Texas Hotel and Lodging Association.
Well, I think we did discuss the fact that Monica's time, one way or the other, the hot funds are going to have to be administered through the finance, uh, department. So she's going to be spending time dealing with that. And we discussed reimbursing that time. That was part of, that was part of why the, it should be self-sustaining and that was how that discussion came up in the finance committee. So.
Well, I'd just say, I mean, I'll defer to Randy's legal opinion on the original resolution, but to me, uh, the inclusion of some of these is simply the unwarranted expansion of the local government, Sherry, and I won't have, I won't get anywhere close to it. I, I, I'm sorry. If, that's what you're doing. You're just, you're just growing the local government.
I, I actually don't, uh, think that in this case, as you well know, I'm against growth of local government.
Obviously not. Obviously not, ma'am.
No, um, these hot funds are already being expended, um, uh, on a, on a bureaucracy.
And with a private contract or a private contractor.
That isn't, that isn't, hasn't been, uh, under our direct oversight and that, uh, uh, all we are talking about is bringing the oversight one step closer to, to the city. Um, removing a, uh, obstruction, if you will, to us overseeing more closely the expenditure of the funds. The employees that they're paying at, currently at the chamber are supposedly coming out of the hot tax, so this would be the same. And this is not going to add an expense to the city.
With all due respect, ma'am, I deal with contractors every single day. I will bend over backwards. I will pay more for a contractor before I try to justify an employee and it's because of control. And that's what you say you want. You say you want control. But via contract, I can, I can put whatever parameters I want to in there. I can put timelines, I can put performance measures, I can put quality standards, I can tie incentives and penalties to each one of those. And I do that because I'm trying to assure myself of the product I get at the end. And, and that that's via contract. It's not a government employee. I asked Mr. Barnes, I went down and talked to him a couple of weeks ago, and I asked him if he could create a job description for a government employee that would give me some of those same kind of assurances. And he said, well, you know, you could get in the minutia of it, I guess, but you wind up with a, with a job description this thick and you wouldn't get anybody to apply or accept the job.
Well, I think.
So you're, you're asking, you're asking to grow the government. You can, you can explain any way you want to, but this is the unwarranted growth of the local government. And you're, you're asking this council to cede control over the final product by putting a government employee in charge of it. I'm sorry, that's what's going to happen.
Well, I don't, I disagree with that. Um, I, as far as, uh, we've been doing, we have ceded total control over it and have exercised no oversight for years and years and years. Um, I feel that, uh, we aren't talking about, as I said, adding to the city bureaucracy. We are talking about adding an employee paid through, for, through the hot tax as it is already being done that is more, more answerable to our, uh, uh, and more transparent as far as the expenditures go to our, uh, uh, oversight. I think that, uh, and there are several things that, uh, uh, that when I was discussing this, one of the problems you have when you have a contract, I agree, it gives you a lot of control. It also makes it extremely difficult to break the contract. Should, should, should the work be unsatisfactory, you can end up in court arguing over whether your version of unsatisfactory matches with the contracts. you can end up in court arguing over whether your version of unsatisfactory matches what the contract says. If it's an employee and the work is unsatisfactory, they can be let go, and there isn't much question about that.
Ma'am, I can draw up a contract, and I can schedule a monthly performance review on that contract with renegotiation rights on a monthly basis. If they don't meet my performance standards and my quality standards, we renegotiate right then and there. I, I don't know how, how you can get.
Well, you're still talking about.
I'd like, real quick, I, I, I think, just sitting here and listening to you guys, and I think what you've said earlier, Mayor, is, it just goes to show why we need to probably ASAP, I guess, maybe on the 12th or the week after, we need to have a meeting to try to get some policy in place, because this is part of the growing of this adventure we're all gonna mark down, so we need to get something in place, I think what Sherry's trying to do here is try to get some initial procedure in place with this resolution, that we know January 1, kind of how some things maybe are gonna work, is what I'm getting from it, correct, is that right, Sherry?
Yes, and that, and that we, we, we don't, we're going to be responsible for this January 1st.
Correct, and now, sometimes it's gonna be, times can be real quick. I think the good thing is, we've got a meeting coming up January 2nd, though, so I, what I'd like to see done is, I think the resolution intent was just to get the ball going, that's why it's not including specific provisions, it's just what I'd call legalese, mumbo jumbo, and it's just give us authority to go create the Visitor and Tourism Center. How we're gonna do from there, that's what we gotta discuss in further discussions. I think we're gonna have some pretty exciting ones, it looks like, and so, what I'm saying, what I would suggest is adopt the resolution as presented tonight, let's get together next week and week after, and start the ball rolling on procedure, policy, that kind of stuff, and let's get some stuff together. So, January 2nd, I think we can probably go a date past the 1st, and have a plan starting January 2nd as to who's overseeing, what's the organizational structure gonna be, how do we solicit bids, and evaluate bids, and all those kind of things, not in today's form, right now, in my opinion, so, I don't know. Do we have a motion for the resolution itself?
No, there's no, no motions.
Let me just see what Mr. Harrison wanted to add, and then we'll, we'll proceed with that.
That's, that's not really, basically what Brady said. I will, I will comment on the fact that, right now, we're basic, we're dealing with approximately $250,000. And I'm not exactly sure that that is going to be enough revenue to attract a private entity to have a contract with. Now, I'm optimistic, I think we know that our, our hotel rooms are going to grow, there will be more tax generated from that, and that may, might be something that we could look at as we move along. But, I'm just, I'm not sure that $240,000 right now is enough to attract someone in here to do it.
It depends on the scope of work, though, Red.
Well, it might be, it might be, it might be, we, we can discuss that in a meeting, in a workshop, agreed?
Alright, so, so I think, let me also remind the council that it's actually over $400,000 of hotel occupancy tax revenue that's generated. $240,000 is what had been allocated to the Chamber, but there's over $400,000 that are generated, and, and that's, you know, when we look at this, we need to step back and look at the entire revenue stream, and, and I, I was gonna ask that we, and Sherry, back to your, your proposal here, we don't have a, a motion yet, but you're proposing that we consider these amendments before the resolution's presented, would, if we, if we get Jeremy to get us a date in, in December, so we can talk about both these, these policy pieces and these amendments in one session, is that amenable?
Oh, yeah, I, I just, I'm, I'm just trying to keep this moving along.
The other point I would like to make here is that there, there is the ability to use a temporary hiring status, and there's also something as a contractor that's one person. I mean, I just went to the Regional Water Board, and they had a consultant that had a consulting company that was providing all this data research for the, for HDR, and it was one person, one contract, and so it was a contract written to one person, so, there, there's some combinations here that we might be able to consider, and, and we just need to look at that. So, if, if that's amenable to everyone, let's draw our attention back to the resolution, and, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt 2017 R...
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Pendleton, second by Ms. Trussell, to adopt Resolution 2017 R-23, a resolution of the city pertaining to expenditures to be made pursuant to the Texas Tax Code, Chapter 351 of the Municipal Hotel Occupancy Tax, including the establishment of a Tourism and Visitors Bureau. Is there any discussion?
That is how the resolution is stated in our packet, and, and nothing to do with amendments.
Right. So, if no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Alright, that motion carries, the one aye, Mr. Nix, and please report me as an aye. Alright, thank you very much, I just wanna remind the council, I mean, this is, we're, we're having great discussion, and we're all moving in the right direction, and let's just keep the momentum, take our inputs as we, as we move forward on this, to create something that Stevensville has never had before, and that's, that's somewhat why this is difficult, because we're, we're taking something that hasn't existed, and we're creating, and let's just keep that in perspective as we move forward, and, and we're all gonna get there, and I'm, I'm confident and really appreciate everybody's passion and concern, and, and we're, we're, we're all moving in the right direction. Alright, now we've got some committee reports, two committees tonight, the Nominations Committee and the Finance Committee, so we'll start, Mr. Harrison, with the Nominations Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The Nominations Committee met on November 14th to discuss appointments to boards and commissions, and you, you have the information there in front of you, excluding, I, I want to point out that on the Board of Adjustment, that I believe that there is a mistake there, that Chris Gifford should be at place two, and Ben Tackett at the alternate position, that I went back and, and checked with the other two members that were present, and visited with Stacy about this, and, and I believe that to be an inaccuracy in our, in our packet. One thing that, that I, I would like to mention, that we talk about just about every year, is, you know, I appreciate everyone that, that applied for a committee, but we're going to have, we're going to have to have more. It's very important to this community to have members here that, that can help in advisory-type positions, and, as I mentioned in the Nominations Committee, I had an individual that talked to me about it, and he said, he said, "Red, one of the problems that you have is, is the format that we've always done, and that is that whenever it comes time to re-up, we just simply ask those that are serving if they want to serve." And what happens, the result of that is, that people, that, that the newer individuals that want to apply, these applicants, they're not picked, because we always give first precedence to, precedence to those that serve, and, and that's something that I personally want to, to look at with the council this year, is how that we can address that, to, to have a little bit more, have a little bit more interest in that regard, in, to some manner. But, without further ado, the information is in your packet, like I said, there is an inaccuracy on the Board of Adjustments, I stated what that is, and I'd like to make the motion that we accept the Recommendation Nomination Committee, and accept these, these individuals on their boards and, and commissions, as stated in the packet.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Harrison, second by Mr. Warren, to accept the nominations from the, to the appointment to boards and commissions, with the modification, I'll just state this in the motion, to, to move alternate Chris Gifford to place two of Board of Adjustment, and Ben Tackett to alternate one in Board of Adjustment. Any discussion?
Yeah, sure. Red, I, I wanna apologize to start with for not making the meeting that night, I would've rather had this discussion then. The, the Stevensville Economic Development Authority is an extremely important board, in my opinion, because of the, number one, the, the amount of dollars that they deal with, but number two, the things that we entrust to them, the growth of the community, the outreach to many, many different places, different people, in many cases, they're gonna be the face of our community. There's one of the, of the nominees that is exceptionally young, and that may or may not be a bad thing, but it seems to me that we'd want someone with more business experience, more time in Stevensville, more development experience, some other things that this individual may not have. Not being present for the discussion, I wondered if there was a, a good explanation that you might have for why that person was put on there.
Well, I, Fisher Rindernick is who you're talking about.
Yes, sure.
Is Fisher here tonight?
Yes.
I'll tell you what, why don't you just address Fisher on this, if he doesn't mind, but essentially, one of the things that, that impressed me was that i, if you, if you visit with Fisher, you'll find out that he's, he's an up-and-coming entrepreneur, very savvy. One of the, one of his concerns is the fact that, as we deal in the community of Stevensville, that there is not a representation for his age group, and especially on the business level. He, one thing that, that I know that, that impressed me was the fact that Mr., or Fisher had received a CEDA Chamber of Commerce Award for Entrepreneur of the Year, or something along those lines.
Entrepreneur of the Year at County.
Yeah, and that's a CEDA-sponsored event.
He also won a statewide competition, second place out of how many entries?
Of 180.
Another Entrepreneur of the Year Award through the state, that's quite impressive, out of 180 that he got second place as a small business entrepreneur.
I wish you'd have been there, Alan, he's a very impressive young man, and don't be discriminating against us young folks.
I'll try to bear that in mind as I deal with you.
Well, do you have any questions for Fisher, I think he, he would agree to, to visit with you.
It, it was just a curiosity to me to, to have someone so young, and I'm not discriminating against you because you're young, but there is something to be said for gray hair and experience, and I, I, I hope you recognize that.
No, I certainly understand it, and I'd love to schedule a coffee with you, if you change your mind.
I'd be willing to accept that challenge. And, and as I said to start with, I apologize for not being at the meeting and hearing that discussion, and it might, it, it probably would've been easier for me to understand more about who you are, Fisher, and, and what you bring to the table, thank you.
Is that it?
Yes, sir. We still have a motion.
Any other discussion? Alright, then we'll proceed to vote, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that motion carries unanimous vote. Now we'll move the Finance Committee and Mr. Levine.
Mayor, we just had a committee meeting on, Finance Committee, on November the 28th. We discussed the simple budget adjustments, Mr. Harris is not here, she's ill, and, you know, maybe some of us needed to be around and get sick, we wouldn't show up, but, I, I suggest that she not attend, since the committee was there, and they've recommended us to approve the ordinance 2017-019, which you have your packet, where it refers to, is our budget adjustments for the year 2017, that's, you know, 2000, ending 2017, September 30th, I'm sure she's on the watch tonight, I hope I'm getting her correct information. Basically, I have a $27 million a year budget, we're adjusting another $190,000 that I reserve. Monica did a great job going through all the details, a lot of people were there in committee being strong. Are there any questions for the council?
I'll just add, didn't she say that there were a lot of the adjustments that had been made this year were holdovers from previous years, mistakes that she had caused that weren't being fully funded before?
Sure does, she, she indicated she had also made mistakes in a couple of areas, she just didn't catch herself, so.
But most of, most of them were just mistakes in the budget that were, that were underfunded.
That's correct, that is correct, you have any questions? So, I'm gonna move, I make the motion that we approve the budget adjustments as presented tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Levine, second by Mr. McClintock, to approve ordinance 2017-019, year-end budget adjustments, any discussion? Now we'll proceed to vote, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If that motion carries, unanimous vote.
Next item, do you have the news next?
Yeah, go ahead.
Typically, we get a report from one of the directors, particularly Finance Director Salman, that's also added to your packet, and we've had several days to review the packet, of, of where we are, really, the end of year, to, to 2017, September 30th, and also, through November 12th. Basically, things are pretty good paid, so, I mean, I don't think that Alan wants me to go through all the details, but I'm gonna keep asking, see if I can beat his record, so I'm gonna make, so, are there any questions about Monica before she's sent out to council? If none, then I recommend that we accept the board as presented to us in our packet.
Second.
Second.
Alright, motion by Mr. Levine, second by Mr. Nix, to approve the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? Now we'll proceed to vote, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If that motion carries, unanimous vote.
Yes, all of them.
Alright, thank you, alright, then we've got the update from our CEDA and Dr. Hubbard, so, welcome, and several members of your board here tonight, thank you for attending.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, good to be here, I think you're all aware of that, of how, at our last meeting, or actually, the last CEDA meeting, I made an announcement that I'll be joining the UNT Dallas faculty. I know, I know, it was, it was a very hard decision.
Did we make, did we stop, give you anything left, or?
I think you probably could, but I think, I've already made that commitment to do that, but, but let me tell you, let's have the board stand up for a second, I wanna just, I, I really appreciate that, I know I didn't ask you to do this, but they're here now, I made this announcement that I would be leaving, and, and, I thought Marion over here somewhere too. Okay, we, you guys can sit down now, okay, you know, really, it was a, a shock to me too, because I didn't apply for this position, I was actually approached to take this position on, so I told the board, and the board had a couple of concerns, and that is, they wanted to keep the momentum that was going, because we've got five or six projects that are going on, they wanted to keep that momo, that, that momentum going, but also wanted to provide for a good transition going from me to the next person. So, and, and also, which is really, I think, made me proud about the board, is, they wanted to make sure that everything that they did was right and according to proper procedures. And we sat in that, that executive session, and, and I watched them agonize over small details to make sure that they did everything that was right, and out of that executives, that executive session, we and the board decided to do a few things, and one of the things we did, we've got Ashley, a fear of honor, I got the name right, I think that's one point for me on that, she's already working for us, and we extended her hours and made her full-time, and we gave her a title of Marketing and Administrative Director, right? And, and you'll see, she's doing a great job for us, that's one of the things that we did. And the other thing that we did, well, I'm leaving full-time on February the 2nd, but hopefully, if we can negotiate some type of con, contract, that I'll be around for a while. But they wanted to make sure that everything was done, that we can keep, keep the momentum going. Now, let's flip over to the next slide, it says September 5th there, and that's because this is what the budget that was, you can go back to this, that's good, go, go, yeah, you can go back to the budget. This is a budget that was approved by the City Council. We had $455,000 worth of expenses, and our revenue, we actually didn't, don't budget as much as what the revenue, we have $491,000 worth of revenue that's anticipated to come in, so really, we're, we're spending about $35,000 less than what we had budgeted on that. Now, you can see that the biggest percent there, we have reserve for economic development projects, we have, is 41%, but after that, our biggest expense is personnel, and that includes benefits, and sal, you know, salary benefits, insurance, and everything else that goes with that, for Ashley and myself, and that's a, at a hundred and thirty, excuse me, is that $155,000 is what that is. So, what we wanted to do was, keep in, in mind now, we want to make a seamless transition, and knowing the parameters that we've got, to go on and, and put something in place, staying within the budget that was approved. So, let's flip over to that next slide that we've got. Okay, so, this is kind of the plan that we laid out there in the executive session that we're going with. Of course, my salary and, and job ends on, on February the, the first. The new, uh, Executive Director, we think, you know, project's gonna start around June, through the end of the year. Uh, the part-time wages, which were, um, are through November the thirtieth, excuse me, yeah, November the thirtieth, and then the Marketing Administrative Director, which is Ashley, will, will begin now, through the end of the year. Now, if you look at that, currently, the budget was one fifty-five, three forty-seven. And the new adjusted budget is actually less than that, it's one fifty-three, zero ninety-seven. And then if you look at all the expenses that we've got in CETA, everything, the operating costs, contractual, everything that we've got, we budgeted four fifty-five, as we said on the, the front slide, five forty-four. The new adjusted budget is four fifty-five, five thirteen. So, that's how we, what we've done, we've gone, operated within parameters of our budget that council approved. And now I'm gonna bring up, uh, our new Marketing and Administrative Director, and we're gonna go in and do a, if they say a picture's worth a thousand words, then a video has to be worth, what, a million?
Exactly.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Ashley.
Well, it's a pleasure, I am delighted to be here this evening, um, again, I'm Ashley Fierbacher with Stephenville Economic Development Authority. Um, we're putting a picture so that you guys can see the thumbprint of CETA in our community. Um, this is just our first year in review, so without further ado. Well, as you can see, the first year, um, I am excited to display what the thumbprint is. And that's not the ongoing to-do list, that's not all of the irons in the fire, so, um, it's very exciting to get to work with the Board of Directors and Dr. Hubbard, um, who just wants to encourage and continue, uh, the, the growth we're seeing, and, you know, the opportunity that Stephenville presents. Um, Fisher did have a very, uh, big hand in helping, we started on this endeavor with him prior. Uh, so, you know, about a month ago, on working on, um, our video and putting it into pictures, like John said, so a picture could be worth a million. So, thank you.
I wanna go, you know, we're, we're talking about, you know, listening, talking, talking about the Visitors and Convention Bureau. You know, we're all experiencing, I guess, growing pains, and anytime there's that unknown stuff, you know, these questions come up, and I think that's really healthy, you're right, my wife and I are exactly the same way, we're just, but it keeps us in balance, so. And, the whole system, the way that CETA's, is put, is, is there, there are checks and balances with the council and the board, I think it's a wonderful thing. And, just with that, one of the things that I kind of inherited, walking in here, was, uh, the impact of Equabrand. You know, that was Steco, the Chamber, and CETA, you know, all, you know, really, all we really did, all, all I really did was encourage them to write a check for twenty-five thousand dollars that was used for some infrastructure improvements that they had on the property. But, the neat thing about that is, you know, there's about six million dollars worth of investment that was done, fifty-five new employees, and also payroll of two million dollars that came in, just directly off of that, and that's just that one. And Crazy Train, that's another one, it's, it's a crazy train, it's got the potential to grow a lot, and it's right here in our backyard, and I'm really, uh, proud of that too. And one other thing that I would like to talk to you about, we've mentioned the infrastructure projects, we already gotten a call, you know, we're gonna extend the line out from the Burger King out to the jewelry, um, this, place of business. We've already got a call for another business that wants to move in because of that. And with that, I'm finished with my report.
Thank you, questions for Dr. Hubbard?
I'd like to say a couple of things.
Sure.
I said them at a meeting with, that we, a few of us had the other night, the day, the City Council. And I'm, I'm sorry to see you go.
I am too.
I think the city is, is, is gonna be the worst place because of that, I think that you, you know, where we are today with CETA and all the cool things that are going on, so I give you a lot of credit for that.
Thank you.
So, I thank you for being here. And I do think, and I, I know Ashley pretty well, and I couldn't, I don't know anybody who could be more organized and keep CETA going than, than Ashley Fierbacher.
I agree.
I tell my husband that all the time.
Thank you, thank you, Council.
Other comments or questions?
Can I just say, the vocal majority stuff, when you cut them, send some down here.
We'll do it.
That's exactly right.
We'll do that.
If y'all haven't seen, y'all need to buy some of that as DVD or CDs for a singing group, these parties, wonderful.
Very impressive, yeah.
Wonderful professional performance.
Thank, thank you very much. I'm actually, was elected president of the organization, and we'll begin that January first too, so I'm looking forward to doing it.
So, that's free CD, they should be.
I'd be able to do that. But, thank you, Council.
Curious what you're gonna do with all your spare time now.
I'm gonna be busy.
I have to be, no.
Thank you for, for what you've done for us, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
So, one thing I also wanted to mention, uh, that I think's really important in the transition, uh, and it's something that we as a council need to continue to strive to do, and that's participate in regional and state boards. And, uh, one of the things that, that John took the initiative to do is to, to get on the Texas Economic Development Council Board, uh, which will hopefully garner us some interest in your, your replacement through communication with the director there, and, uh, the word out that this, this is a, the job someone coming into would be very excited to, uh, to take the reins for, because of the opportunity.
I actually met with Carlton this last weekend, we met in Austin for a board meeting, told him about that, and also talked, mentioned to him about him coming here and speaking at some point, we're looking at the calendar for that, but yes, the word is out about.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that report. Alright, now we've got the consent agenda, I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. McClinton, seconded by Mr. Savine, to approve the consent agenda as presented, any discussion? Now we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that motion carries unanimous vote. And, comments from our city administrator?
Just as a note for John, um, we've had a pretty good relationship working, and so I am s- sorry to see him go. My wife was kinda happy, 'cause John's called me at numerous hours, any time of the night, and so, she's glad my phone will be ringing that late at night for, for that, so. Um, I will say a special thanks to the Chamber of Commerce and, um, city staff, there's a lot of hours that go into Holly Jolly. It was a great event, we had great weather, but everything from the streets crew to the police officers, to our parks crew, there's a lot of hours that people don't see that goes into that, and I appreciate the work that staff does for that, so. I hope I'm not stealing anybody's thunder, but, you know, it was a good opportunity for me to say that, and, and Nick's crew, their guys were out there, and Jason's crew were out there for a long time, so. Um, the city offices will be closed eleven-thirty to one on Friday, December fifteenth, for the employee Christmas party, I missed the line. Uh, December twelfth is a Planning and Development Committee meeting. I'm thinking, just as temporary, that, uh, December fourteenth will probably be the hotel meeting, the hotel, uh, that'll give Mr. Barnes a day or two to, to finalize any plans that we have to give to you guys, so, I might put that on the calendar. Um, city offices will be closed Monday, January first, for New Year's Day, and the regular council meeting on January second.
Maybe so. Any questions for Jeremy? Well, thank you for filling in, there better be some really good German chocolate in your future.
At least a souvenir, so.
Okay. Mark?
Jeremy stole all my thunder, so I'll just wish everybody a blessed Advent season and a Merry Christmas.
No, no comment.
Okay. Merry Christmas. John Hubbard, a sincere thank you, you're, you're a good man, you've, you've, uh, you've been a blessing to this community.
I appreciate it.
I bet you.
I'd like to second that.
Sure?
And, and nothing, I just, I really, we have really been fortunate to have had you here, John, and I just thank you so much for everything you've done, it's been amazing.
Can we backtrack real quick to me, I don't know if that works, I don't know how this works up here, but, don't forget about the Polaris, uh, Ranger USA, the voting for that, if you're out there, um, make sure you get your votes in, we're, we're still hoping to, to win that, so.
Yeah, if you, if you haven't been online yet, for those of you that are watching, go to Polaris and, uh, their website. We've got a competition going on in five cities in the United States, and we're up, we're one of those five, you can vote every day. Uh, and, uh, if we, as a city, win that, we'll be declared Polaris City USA, and we'll get five Polaris, uh,
Rangers.
Rangers here for, for our community. Uh, I, I just wanna say a couple of things quickly, uh, first of all, uh, I've got my Yellow Jacket tie on tonight, uh, really proud of the team and, and, and the fans, and just the community and the support that's been displayed, uh, those, those young men and, and the coaches, uh, that are representing, and, but also the, the entire school and the band, and, and cheerleaders and, and just everything, it's, it's really special, and I, I also want to mention Holly Jolly, uh, and all the, the work that goes in from the community, if you were there that, that night, the turnout was phenomenal. It was the largest I had seen in the last few years, and the weather was perfect for the evening. And the highlight for me is, it's done for several years now, I had, uh, three, three girls from the foster's home that helped me light the tree, uh, Makyla, uh, Avila, and Veta, and those girls are just priceless, the, uh, uh, the joy in, in their eyes, and, and the, the hope that Christmas provides. And, uh, Dr. Hubbard, I want to thank you for your service, and just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and holiday season. And, uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Alright, we'll adjourn at six fifty-four.